Is allowed to take pictures at they distract. It's not something that the council do approval. Um, please be advised that this meeting will not take public comments. Uh, this is for council business to deal with some issues, some items. Uh, at this time, I will ask the secretary, Ms. More tomorrow to proceed with a roll call.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Starting the roll call now at six thirty-three P M. I'm sorry, just give me. Okay, Ms. Amy Ming Sai. Mr. Craig Spencer.
Present.
Mr. Shemel Lawrence.
Present.
Ms. Christie Angel. Present. Ms. Christie Montevan present, Mr. Angel Morales.
Present.
Ms. Ayesha Husband. Ms. Celia Green.
Good evening, present.
Joanne Jones.
Present.
Ms. Patricia Jewett.
Present.
Ms. Constance Seadoo.
He's running late, she's coming on.
Okay, and Ms. Lenai Jennings, student member.
Um, present.
So for the record, I believe, um, I. She couldn't make it because she had to work and Angel and Joanne, you said you had to leave at seven?
That is correct, Ms. Spencer.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, just want to, just want to state that for the record.
All right, good. All right, so we're gonna ask for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Um, Shauna and Mr. Tillman, are you ready to, uh, speak to what we spoke about last week? Do you need to be a co-host before you can share your stream or anything?
Hi, everyone, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we could hear, yeah, we could hear. Okay.
Right, so, so, um, good evening, council, this is Shauna Gibson, and I am joined tonight by Roberto Tillman, who, as you know, has retired but still, uh, works with us a couple of days a week, and by Kamal, who is our new director of finance, and he and I were both rushing like crazy to get home from a meeting. I made it, he's still on the bus, I can see. So, thank you for letting us join you tonight. Um, the reason that, that we wanted to have a conversation with you is that we wanted to make sure that we are fulfilling the intent of the council in terms of allocation of your budget, but also to make sure that, that the council did not get caught out by some of our Department of Education procurement deadlines and rules. Um, everyone can hear me all right, I don't have my headset on, but I'm assuming that, that, okay, thanks. Um, so, so I think that we are, we, we know what the council wants to do, and we just want to make sure that the council is able to spend the money in the most strategic and, you know, in the best way possible. Um, I think, as you know, we often, in the Department of Education, have deadlines that seem ridiculously early, and one of them is our procurement deadline is the first of April, which means that any purchase orders have to be made by the first of April. So there are a couple of items that I don't, I'm not sure that the council is ready to purchase yet, so we wanted to talk to you about that. The other thing that we wanted to talk to you about is I know that the council is very interested in securing the services of a report writer, and we want to help you with that and make sure that you get the person that you want, but we also want to make sure that that person is a DOE vendor, because, uh, should you choose somebody that isn't a DOE vendor, we are concerned that getting them onboarded and enough time to do the work and to be paid for the work by the end of this fiscal year might be challenging. Roberto, Kamals, or anything that I've left out in terms of like setting the context for this?
No, that was the context.
Great, and then one, and then, uh, it's, it's, one of the things that we, we wanted to get clarification on is that I know that the council voted to move around some money. But one of the thing, when we were, we were talking to the presidents, is we, we are interested in knowing whether, or, you know, often putting that, the money, we want to make sure that you're able to get what you want to get and pay for it, and often, instead of reducing the amount of the P card, perhaps using the P card for these purchases towards the end of the year might give the council some more flexibility. There are still rules, there are still rules that everyone has to follow in terms of, of bidding and caps and things like that. But, um, and so we wanted to ask the council what they were planning to do for end of year, and thought that perhaps having that money in P card rather than in a purchase order that would have to be finished and finalized by the end of this week might be a better decision. Um, so, so that, that is where we are, so I, I guess, um, I see a hand up. I don't know if that hand up is specifically about, uh, and I also, I'm gonna let the facilitator call, call on people, I'm not gonna do that for you, I, I don't want to, um, overstep my, my boundaries here.
I'm, I'm not seeing a hang, yeah.
I think, I think it was my own device. Um, so, so thank you, so. To Roberto Kamal, you can, you can join me in this, but I think to us, the biggest issue is, does the council have an idea? Or are they close to, are you close to selecting the person for your annual report? I know that, I know that there is a process that you guys had adopted, and we were just interested in knowing where you were in that process and how we can support that.
I see Ms. Green hang.
Thank you, um. Good evening. We are in the, hi, how are you? We are in the process of trying to turn my light on at the same time. We are, we're hoping to have had a committee meeting, uh, by now, but a lot of other things, you know, were outlawed. So, uh, we were going to reach out to some existing, um, DOE vendors, DOE, you know, writers that are vendors, um, to see if we can get one of them to do the annual report. But I was not aware that with a lump, with a sum as large as what you have to give for the annual report, because we're thinking three thousand plus or whatever, uh, that we could do it on a P card.
No, 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 no. If, if, if I gave the impression we can't do it on a P card, so let me, we are, there, there was, there were some supplies that the council had, had decided to buy. There were some end-of-year things, like a conference or parental involvement that we have some questions about, but the, you're absolutely right, Ms. Green. The paying for a, an individual to write a report is not allowable on a P card. So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to talk to you tonight, because we wanted to figure out the best way to make sure that the money was there once you made that selection. So it is good to hear that you are looking at people who are already DOE vendors, because that was our, one of our concerns, that you got, the, the committee would select somebody who did not have a vendor number, had not gone through the vendor process yet. Uh, but it sounds like we have, it sounds like you've already thought of that and already ahead of, of that particular hurdle. Is that right?
Well, we thought of it before, either way, whoever we paid had to be a DOE vendor. So, we weren't trying to keep it exclusive to DOE vendors, we really were not. I think it's just that it's a deadline, so to speak, um, we're at lunchtime. And, um, it takes about, I think, six to eight weeks to be approved for the vendor. You have to become a city vendor, so to speak, because it's not just a DOE. Um, so I'm, like I said, we're hoping to select from people who already have it or are nearly completed, um, the application process with, with the city.
With the city and with the, I, we think that's the same for the Department of Education, but I'm just like calling that out, Roberto.
It is, it is, my former council member on CCA does, has one of those, uh, particular vendor things, and she is a vendor for the city. And there's several other parents now on this call, but there are several other parents that have gone through that process, who are all vendors for the city. For any city contractor, for the city agencies to pay you, you have to be a vendor with the city. But that's really what it is.
Right, okay, and we just wanted to make sure that you're, you're absolutely right that the process to get qualified can, I mean, at a best-case scenario, can take six to eight weeks. Sometimes it can take longer, so, um, so we can pre-incumber, correct the amount that the council wants to spend on this and make sure that it is okay for them once they make that decision. Is that, is that right, gentlemen?
Uh, yeah.
They'll be correct.
Okay. All right, um, then.
Can I ask one question? Because I know you said, um, we had a new, I'm, I'm not sure what you said the title was, because I know Mr. Tillman was the SGO. Uh, what is the title of the new financial person?
So, so Kamal Salfarla is the director of finance. We do, District Seventy-Five does not have a senior grants officer. Uh, that work was being done by Minnie Paulson before she, she left the district, and, um, we have not been able to, we haven't been able to post and replace Minnie, uh, who is actually irreplaceable. Um, but Kamal and, and Roberto are sort of like managing the work with the council right now through this transition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I was about to say, you have your supplies purchased, Ramona took care of that last week. So the supplies have already been procured, and so the question is, um, wanted to make sure all the numbers added up, and what the council is planning to spend any additional money on besides member reimbursements, and make sure that money is in the right place and that, um, we, we can make sure that you're able to spend it.
I see a hang up from our treasurer, Ms. Angel.
Um, I was a little confused with the email that was sent out. The P card lines, I think it says it was fifteen thirty-seven or something that's off. The P card line should have been reduced down for a thousand dollars, and the supplies line would have been at one sixty-four sixty-eight, because we had already deducted the five hundred, the five hundred line number. So I'm trying to figure out what the discrepancies are, um, there.
Yeah, that, that was our quest, that was our question too, so we, um. I'm, I'm gonna turn my camera off and see if I can share what, what I was referring to, but, um, we received a document from Ramona at one point that had, had those alter, um, those changes that you mentioned, council member, but then had a, a sort of like a table at the bottom, left-hand side, that said reallocation request, which was that parent involvement, annual report writer, end-of-year event, and CCD seventy-five conference. And so we were just trying to figure out whether those were all items that the council had, had voted on, and if so, how the council is planning to fund them. Does that make sense?
Yes, I was just looking at the most recent email with the discrepancies, but I guess I can go back to.
Right, so, so when I went through, and I sent that, that email, when I went through those, I'm like, I'm just not really sure. And then the, the, and then the other thing that we want to talk to you about is I know that the council, we know that the council recommended reducing the P card, but we wanted to ask you if that is, in fact, what you want to do, because anything else that you are going to purchase needs to be done by the end of this week because of procurement deadlines, whereas having the P card would give you a little bit more flexibility. For example, if you were planning to purchase food, uh, for an end-of-year meeting or something like that, you would still have to do the bid process for the food, like you do all, every single time, but you could use the P card for that as opposed to purchasing that by the end of this week. Does that, does that make sense? Am I explaining?
So then it could mean maybe the one thousand from either the CCD seventy-five conference could go back to the P card, or from the end.
And, and we would continue, we, we would continue to work with you. I mean, I, I'm sure you, you know, like, we can't just use the P card like it was our personal credit card and just charge, our rules about that. Um, and you guys seem to be totally on top of that.
Well, I'd be able to, as a treasurer, to have access just to the statements, if it's redacted or not, just to be able to link up the numbers, how would that work?
Right, so, so one of the things that's a little bit tricky for us today is that Galaxy is out for the system, so we weren't able to pull your budget. What I'm gonna do is pull this document that your administrative assistant sent to us, and then perhaps you can talk us through what, what you meant. I don't think this is a huge decision, I don't, I don't think this is a big, we just want to make sure the money is there so that you can spend it in the way that you want to, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, give me a moment or two to, to pull that up unless, um, Roberto or Kamal, you have that handy.
I don't have it handy, but it, as far as the, um, P card, um, you should be receiving copies of the statements.
I have never received a copy of the statement.
Well, they're, they're sent to the cardholder.
No, no, I understand, but as a treasurer, just for clarity, with removing everything over, do I get to see anything to reconcile numbers, or how will I move forward with that part of it?
Well, there's no reason why Ramona can't provide you with copies of the statements.
Okay, I'll just make sure to just touch base with her, I'm not saying that she's blocking me or anything like that. I just haven't seen them, you know, as of yet, so I just want to make sure moving forward that I can, you know, make sure we're at the right lines.
Um, for the record, Ramona couldn't make it tonight, so, uh, Mr. Lawrence and I will make sure we take notes and, uh, and pass this on to, um, Mr. Lawrence, I recognize, recognize Constance's hand.
Yeah.
If, Chris, if you, if you finish.
Yeah, like.
I just wanted to say, I think it was clarified last year that we're supposed to receive copies of their P card statements when they come in with her private information blacked out, but the statement itself should be attached to the council's treasury report monthly. Okay, I thought that was the decision we made as a count, as a council. All right, now, I didn't know there was any activity on the P card except for the purchases that were just made for supply this year that we need to get statements from. It should be nothing utilized, or am I incorrect?
That's, that's, that's for, yeah, clarification, the P card was only used for the supplies. That's the only time it been used. And once, um, that is used, we have to block out Ramona information, because her information is attached to the P card, because she is a DOE employee. That's correct, Constance.
Yeah, I'm aware of it, but I'm also saying, just for clarification in future, we need all the statements sent to us, whether anything's been used or not.
She, she Nami does, she, she Nami does send over. She Nami does whenever a purchase or something is done, she Nami sends it over, and it's Nami on the budget. If nothing was used, she would send that over, it's nothing been used, yeah.
No, I know she was on a sabbatical for some months, but that has to be caught up on, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Council, um, with your permission, I'm gonna share my screen, is that all right?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, of course, you are imagining that I can do this, um, and not mess it up. But are you able to see, uh, a, a, a record of a vote?
Yes.
Okay, so now, what I'm gonna share with you is, this is, this, this is where we had a couple of questions, and we just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, would it be helpful if I made it a little bit bigger?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so the questions that I had, and are sort of at this bottom, bottom here, where, where were the funds coming for these particular areas, right? So parent involvement and annual report writer, those were, that forty-six, six, forty-six sixty was coming from member reimbursements, correct?
We had those monies coming from that entire yellow line. The three hundred from, I can't, um, office supplies, the one thousand from the P card, three hundred from, oh, I really can't see, the local travel, and then the three thousand from the reimbursements.
Okay, how, how can I make this easier for you to see? Can I, if I make it?
It's, um, that, um, I can, it's okay, I can pull up my own too, but I'm, I'm pretty good with where we are.
Okay.
And we had a discussion that sixteen sixty was only sixteen hundred.
Where you, the sixteen, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, so here is the straightforward thing. The straightforward thing is the annual report writer, you're taking three thousand dollars out of member reimbursement, that's where you're going to get that three thousand dollars from, correct? We will make sure that it goes into the right code in Galaxy, because as Councilmember Green rightly says, that's not a P card purchase, that needs to go through procurement processes. We know what code that goes into, um, and we, we will take care of that once Galaxy is open, and once you have your report writer in place, then we can take care of that. So unless I hear anything from any, I, I think we're, we're clear on that. My, my question to the council was, what are you plan, what is this three thousand dollars at the bottom of the spreadsheet? The E O Y event and the CCD seventy-five conference?
That was a question when we were moving the monies. It was this, do you want to move it particularly for it to go toward this or to go toward that? That's what those two things were for, a vote for us.
Okay, and then it just, you know, and again, I'm sorry if we didn't catch it, like, did the council vote on that, or was that just something that we were, that the council was considering?
Um, they vote, we voted on it on March second, because we were advised the monies were gonna be basically in place as of the fourth of March, and then I was told that Galaxy wasn't ready, so now we could have this meeting to make acceptance.
Okay, so, so perhaps. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start from a different perspective. So the council has decided that, or the council agreed that probably would not need all of the member reimbursements and wanted to use the money for some other things, which is what lots of councils do across the city, right? One of those things was an annual report writer, because District Seventy-Five is Citywide Council, and so three thousand dollars set aside for that. Um, I am not sure how much money the council was planning to spend on, on supplies, but I know that Ramona ordered what the council ordered, it went ahead and procured that, and that came to five hundred and forty-seven dollars or something like that. That was, that was a couple of days ago. Um, and then I guess really the question is, is that we are happy to help you spend it, spend your money on the end-of-year event and the CCD District Seventy-Five Conference, and I think the part that's challenging for us is, where does that money go and how can we spend it? Because if you know what you want to spend it on, we can help you get those purchase orders put together by the end of this week. If you don't, if you're not that far in your planning, that's where we were wondering whether it would, might make more sense for the council rather than to reduce their P card, to put that money on their P card so they can use it down the road for the parental involvement, for the, for the events. Does, does that make sense?
Yes, it would, for, for the end-of-year event, we still have a meeting that we need to discuss those items, but currently, it, most of the costs would go toward food. We would have chairs and like tents and different things that we would need to offset. Those pricings would have to, we would have to price it out, I guess, with the vendors and have the bids, however. Unless, you know, that's what I'm.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's kind of what you were thinking about, some sort of end-of-year event. It would include families and, and students, perhaps?
It would be families and students, it's gonna be an end-of-the-year field day.
Okay.
So. Oh, yeah, so we were working through what the theme might be, and I kind of put a stop on, you know, looking for what financial aspects, because I wanted to hear what we were doing today, specifically just to see how we would need to move. But, um, if we need to quickly come about with numbers, you know, before our next meeting, we could do that. Um, but we have, now do not have numbers set for, for the location, we're trying to choose.
Okay, when, do, do, do you think that it would be, would we be landing on a good place, council, if we said, all right, we got twenty-five thousand dollars for Citywide Council District Seventy-Five? Um, here, here are the buckets that we plan to, we can, we, we are, we have spent money on. Here are the buckets where we plan to spend money on, and we will set aside three thousand dollars for the report writer, but perhaps move the remainder of that money that is not going to the report writer and is not going to member reimbursements to the P card. Because it does not.
With that, as long as I can know, um, how we correctly move around it to get things purchased. I know that's probably, that maybe, if I'm not stepping on Ramona's toes, just toes, just for clarity of myself in moving forward to, um, you know, make sure things happen as it's supposed to financially.
I, and I, I think that's a great question, and I, I think that, you know, before, before we sort of hit the end of that discussion, I want to sort of check in verbally right now with Roberto and Kamal, because, um, you know, is that going to work? Or should we, should we be figuring out a different system?
Okay, so, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so for the food, um, the P card should be fine as long as you have the appropriate. For the furniture, assuming if you're renting it, then, uh, if it's being rented from a deal, you tend to.
I can't really hear well.
Yeah.
Oh, so.
Oh, okay.
If it's, um, furniture that's being rented, like the tents and so on, if that's being rented, then, uh, I'm assuming that as long as it's before, below twenty-five hundred, you guys, uh, should be able to use the P card as long as you have the appropriate paperwork and stuff. You know, one thing I wanted to mention is that on this forum, there was, we were supposed to move three hundred supplies, but when we checked today, uh, we noticed that all of the supplies funds were already spent. So we're not looking at sixteen hundred anymore, we're looking at thirteen hundred, one thousand of which we have on the form to remove from the P card. But if we all agree, then we'll, the thousand will be moved on the P card instead of removing it. We haven't moved it as yet, and, um, the three hundred is coming out of transportation. We're recommending that you guys add to the P card as well. And then the final amount of three thousand would be moved to, um, a place where you can, you sort of like. Right, but, uh, if let's say you want to participate in P card, uh, definitely, I would suggest you check with us first, if it's not, um, what we already discussed. I'm not, you already have ideas of, uh, what else you want to do. Other than, uh, the food and, uh, the rental of, uh, you know, chairs or whatever.
I partly heard it, I don't want to tell the story.
Yeah.
I, I think I heard that you said, move, keep the thousand dollars in the P card, the other allocations, put them in the P card, and then with the rider, move that somewhere so that it can be used appropriately, et cetera, maybe? Is that close to what you were saying?
Okay, is it any better now?
No.
It's just.
It's a little bit, it's a little bit, yeah.
I'm gonna try something else.
Okay, so, so while, 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 while you're doing that, Kamal, let me, let me just, so, how much money does the council want set aside for member reimbursement? Is it fifteen eight thirty-nine?
The line, I, I'm looking at the email, it should be sixty dollars additional to that. The fifteen eight six nine three nine should be the allocation.
Okay, so, so that, so you guys are still looking at my screen, right? So line, oh, there's no line number, but the one that I'm circling with my cursor, fifteen eight three nine?
Can't see your screen either, you, you just have, that print is too small for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Constance, is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I am looking at a line here, and I'm circling it now with my mouse, it says, projected end-of-year reimbursement fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty-nine thirty-seven. Is that what the council was, was hoping once they, they took out the, the money for everything else?
Yes.
Okay, was that number?
Yeah, that should be the number, yes. I have to go back through the documents, but the numbers that are on there are what I came up.
Okay, that's great, all right.
I concur based on the minutes that we approved.
Right.
Let's just stay to the minutes.
Okay, we just want to make sure we got the math right.
The sixty-dollar, the sixty-dollar typo. The sixty dollar, the sixty dollar typo would go there with that, where it says sixteen sixty, the sixty should be with the member, blah, member reimbursement still.
So it should, the sixty dollars goes on eight three nine, and so it would be eight nine nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the real number there should be fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine and thirty-seven cents, right?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that's an oddly specific number, but okay. Um, and then three thousand dollars to the report writer, correct?
Yeah, it's not scrolling over, but yes.
I, I can scroll it over. I'm also doing math in my head now. Um.
Do you guys hear me better now?
Oh, that's better. Okay, so that takes us, that takes us to eighteen thousand dollars eight hundred and ninety-nine. How much money was the council planning to spend on reimbursements or has spent on reimbursements? Not reimbursements, I'm so sorry, supplies.
The, um, I can't see the number above, but it might, the five two five on the right? That's the only thing we had approved that left the one six four three four.
According to our minutes from March second, five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Oh, it's not on the screen. Okay, got it.
Five, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents we allocated for all of the supplies.
Five hundred and thirty-five, okay, and then the actual ended up, the actual ended up being five hundred and forty-two. Okay, that, that makes sense to me. So supplies was five hundred and thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-two, this is leaving a hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for the council to use until June thirtieth of this year. That's what, that's what we did, that's what our minutes state on March second.
Okay. So it was five hundred and thirty-five plus another hundred and sixty-five-ish? Was total, um, supplies?
The one hundred and sixty-four, sixty-four is what would have been left after the amount that we added up. Ramona gave me the screenshots of what the amounts were, I guess, in, I don't know if it's famis or which, I don't know which, um, thing that you used to get the number from. And so we took those numbers.
Okay, so, so that means that basically the council was planning to spend about seven hundred dollars on supplies over the course of the year, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So that makes sense because she spent five hundred and forty-seven or whatever it was yesterday. Um, but you've got like a hundred and sixty left for, for the rest of the year, right?
Yes.
That sounds accurate.
Okay, all right, so that, that, that is, I'm gonna start rounding this up just for the sake of. Okay, so with supplies, member reimbursements at that fifteen thousand and, and nine hundred dollars and the, and the report writer, that takes you to nineteen thousand six hundred dollars. Was there anything, is there anything else that the council has spent money on or planning to spend money on?
Not that I'm aware of. We spent the two fifty-one on the website. Ramona gave me the receipt for that. Um, and then the supplies, if there's.
I'm sorry, sorry, Chrissy.
Uh, that's the only two things that I'm aware of so far.
And then we were just gonna leave some, some, some sort of change.
The one sixty-four.
For the transportation, just in case if, uh, open, open meetings law was, um, reinstated and then to get Ramona to where our meetings would be.
Right, so, so this two hundred that's in yellow here, there was, we're gonna reduce by three hundred, right? To leave two hundred in the event that you needed travel for Ramona, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and then the, the one thousand up here, this was where we, we're gonna reduce, reduce the P card, which again, we have not done that yet, doesn't seem to me as though you need to. Um, because we're still, we're still coming up a little bit short, unless I'm doing the math wrong.
I can't see this, what, what is, I can't see the screen. I'm sorry, I want to be as helpful as I can.
Oh, no, you got, you guys are doing great. Guys are doing great. We're just trying to make sure. So what were, what were you going to use? How are you going to pay for your end of year event? That was something you hadn't, hadn't really talked about yet, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay. Um, so.
So do we, do we need to have like a deadline to just kind of get the bids going or something of that nature? Like what are we looking at in order to accurately move forward once we do make this change?
Well, okay, so the, the, here, here's how is probably gonna be the most effective is that you, you are gonna have deadlines for bidding and getting that done, but that is not the urgent deadline, right? The urgent deadline is making sure that the money is in the right place so that when you're ready to spend it, um, we, we don't have to worry about it, you know, it's like, it's unfortunate, right? Like it's not a budget, like you get ten dollars and you can spend ten dollars, like it's gotta be in the right envelope in order to use it. Um, so, so you've got money in your member reimbursement, we're gonna move money into your, into your, um, report writer category because that's gotta be, gotta be in the right place. And then in terms of, in response to your question about the bids and everything like that, does not have to be this week, should be something that you start thinking about in April. Um, just to sort of make sure that you, 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 you've got everything and all your paperwork in place and, and time, but it, you know, does not have to be. The reason why we're having this meeting today is that if you were like, no, we want to do it as a purchase order and we don't want to do it as P card, that is, that is where the urgency would come in. That's where you would need to have that done by the end of this week. Does, does that?
And we would have someone like a writer and everything by the end of this week?
The writer, the writer we can take care of for you, right? But if you were going to use a purchase order to purchase food or to, or to rent chairs or to rent a tent instead of the P card, that would have to be done by the end of this week because.
Got it, okay, no, that, yeah.
Okay, right, all right, Kamal, Roberto, I explained that correctly, right?
So then the simplest answer would be everything that was in excess would go back to the P card except for the report writer. Would that be a new line item or where are you requesting or saying that we should put the writer, the three thousand?
Yep, writer does not go on the P card because that has to go.
It would be, it would be a new line item.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then you, you are right, everything else would just end up, I, I mean, everything else would just end up being added to the P card amount, and that's what you would use to spend down going forward.
That makes sense. To me, I mean, it's a council vote, but I, I understand, I, I will mute myself so that other people can ask additional questions. Um, thank you.
Um.
So we wanted to discuss this with you guys to make sure that when you're voting, you know how much money, you know, what, what you're voting for, if it's to, you know, leave the money on the P card, move money from transportation to the P card, or exactly what, what, um, you know, you guys want to do so that you don't have to, you know, find yourself in a situation where you need to have an emergency meeting. We all wanted to be on the same page today.
Thank you, I recognize, I recognize Mr. Spencer Heng.
So, um, thank you, um, Shona, um, Kamal and Mr. Tillman. Um, so what do, what do we? I think the only other thing that's outstanding is just what we're gonna spend, the money that we're gonna spend on the end of the year. Um, is that still three thousand dollars or? Uh, actually, uh, wh- what's, I'm, I'm a little bit lost in the sauce here. What would be the?
I think, I think that is what would be helpful for us to know is like, where is this, where is this money going? Um, and then, and then I, I don't want to add more complexity, but then you have a little bit more flexibility to say, okay, we're gonna do end of year and some extra supplies, but you, you can, you can still use that P card. Again, we will help you with, with making sure that you do it correctly. So I think it would be helpful. And again, you know, I'm sorry, if we, if we had Galaxy, we would have been able to see what the council has already committed and spent. So we're just, you know, that's why we're asking you questions. You're like, oh, you guys, you guys should know that, right? But the biggest categories right now are member reimbursements, the report writer. Um, not the biggest categories, the, the sort of separate categories, travel for the A A, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, are you keeping, are you, okay, that's, that's local travel, parent involvement. Was that a specific thing or was that just money?
The, the, everything is basically parent involvement is just money, however the council would use it, um, in parent involvement. I guess the flexibility is what was, um, nice in that aspect. Um, in regard to the end of year event and the C C D seventy-five conference, in my mind, they were looked at as almost like sub items under parent involvement, how that part of the money would be used and broken out just so that we would have something to guide us as we were moving.
Okay. Okay.
Shona, I recognize council member Constance with a hang. I think she have a question, Constance.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I just want to ask a question. So I didn't vote on the last budget, so I just want to get some understanding before we proceed because I've done budget, I've been, uh, I've done budgets before with councils, so I have better understanding than some of the other people. What we're here for specifically is, uh, any purchase orders that are being done other than paying the writer, correct? You're talking about food allocations or whatever for the end of the year, whatever events we're having before the year is out, correct? Am I correct? I just want to understand it from my point of view.
That, that's.
I know some councils plan their end of the year months ahead. They already know who their vendors are, they already know who they're going to pay anything to, and it's just a matter of getting those purchase orders out and making sure those people are paid. And with ours, we don't have specifics, so you prefer the P card be used instead.
I, I would not say necessarily it's a preference, Constance, more that.
No, I'm talking about as far as, as far as Galaxy and famis and all that.
Right, because of our, because of our purchasing debt, because our purchasing deadline is this week. Yeah, right, so you're right. If you had planned, i- i- if the council had planned something earlier that we could have funded it a little bit differently. But you're absolutely right.
When is Galaxy going to open up again? So that we have accurate figures.
So that'll be April the fourth.
Okay, thank you very much. And at that time, we'll be sent to report what our actual standing is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we will take care of that for you.
Okay, and there is no limit. I just want to understand the P card now because it's parameters. How much you can purchase on food or is there a dollar amount you can do per time on a P card?
So there is a limit, there is a limit, I believe the last time, which is a few years ago, I believe the limit was twenty-six hundred per day.
Okay.
No, and, and you, you are, you are right that that changes, that has changed multiple times over the years.
Right.
Um, so I am, I'm sure that although we don't know the details right now because we didn't have time to pull that information, that there will be limits, but we, we will commit to working with you to make sure that you don't get caught up by trying, excuse me, to order something and then finding out you can't do it because of some procurement restriction. Okay.
Like equipment, for example, you cannot purchase equipment with a P card.
Yeah, that I'm well aware of, and they have deadlines for equipment purchases also. I think that's that deadline coming up or it was prior.
Yeah, the equipment purchases deadline is, has passed.
So for this meeting also, what we wanted to make sure that at the end, we can, we will know is what you want us to prepare to work. So, for example, the last, um, communication we had was about removing a thousand off the card. And now, you know, prior to doing that, we wanted to meet again to say, hey, look, uh, should we be really doing that or should we be leaving those funds on the P card? And should we be moving the three hundred we're taking from travel onto the P card as well? You know, that would put, I believe, on the P card twenty-three hundred, because I see two thousand, uh, on the line. I'm not sure if any of that was spent already.
Um, the P card had two thousand dollars, we were removing one thousand dollars. So then two fifty-one would be, we're taking from, it would be seven forty-nine left over in technicality.
Okay. All right, so really for us, the question is whether or not you're going to leave the thousand on the P card that you were initially gonna remove and whether you're gonna move the three hundred from travel um, onto the P card as well so that you have both, both balances on the P card. And of course, we know that the three thousand would be moved for the, the writer. So that would not go on the P card, we would place it on the appropriate line. Those are all the transactions we have. I do see one for supplies, but when we checked the system, I did not see that there were any, uh, supply funds available. Um, it looked as if it, it was all spent, so I can confirm that when Galaxy opens.
Yes, please, that would, that would be interesting if, yeah, we shouldn't have all of our supplies spent at all. I think that was the year.
Okay, so you, you were expecting to have maybe about a hundred and sixty dollars left for supplies, right?
That would be the remain, yeah, that would be the remainder after we move the three hundred.
I see, Mr. Spencer, wait a second.
Go ahead, guys, something.
Yeah, thanks. So just to get the conversation going, um, I, I think at this point it behooves, and I would, I would, I'm only using, speaking my opinion, I don't speak of the council, that, um, we find a, end of year, a place within a D O E, uh, D O E, um, a venue, um, to cut down on, uh, our expenses and then we can focus our expenses in terms of, um, uh, food, um, maybe we can rent, can we rent chairs with, if, it will, but if we have, if we're meeting with the D O E, D O E should have, the school should, or, or facility should have their own chairs, I presume. Um, so I'm just putting it out there in reference to, at this point, because to make it easier, we find a place, a D O E place, um, where we can hold our, an event. And, um, a- and that way we won't have to worry about spending money in terms of renting someplace and just use that money in terms of food, um, and any other small entertainment or something like that, um, that the P card allows. Um, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there.
Well, currently, that's exactly where it is. Um, we were looking at to get a space in Central Park if we have the date locked. That aspect would only be twenty-five dollars. And then the schools, um, I did reach out to Jose to ask around like, and Mr. Lawrence is also checking as well. I'm just concerned that, you know, if it's concrete or if the kids will be hurt, if it's just a regular yard versus, you know, something where it's like a real field. So those are the aspects. We're trying to keep the, um, money more toward the fooding and then maybe what we have along. But also, you know, you never know what may happen with, um, Special Olympics New York in regard to the field day aspect. So we do need to flesh that aspect out, but, um, as far as the venue, completely a thousand percent, um, we're not trying to pay a price for the venue for the field day.
I see Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I was just gonna say that, uh, before, and I'm gonna say we gotta do what we did before, but before when we did the end of the year events and, uh, the group that I was in in twenty thirteen was the first group that actually did one of those end of year events. We did pay with the P card because basically it was in the venue, the venue we had, we were at Court Square and that building happened to have the space that we could use at that time. It was a D O E building and so on. Um, so basically the money that we did spend was for the food, which was from a D O E vendor, we had gotten the bids and everything and we did pay with that P card. Uh, we also had purchased, um, we'd also purchased, what do you call them, backpacks? We had purchased backpacks from again a D O E vendor and school supplies again from the same D O E vendor and had that stuff together and given it to, um, to the parents that came on a first come, first served basis. So there was sort of like one per family, um, so as many families as we could, we would get something if they came to the event. Um, but again, every single thing was purchased on the P card because it was the end of the year, we'd already. We'd already run through, most of the reimbursements were already allotted, most of the other, um, payments were already done. Um, and at that time, we were not, uh, we were not, we didn't have to do an annual report. So that was not a fee we had to really worry about at that time. It's a little different now, because we do have to worry about that. But, um, I'm just saying, you know, I think that most of these things can be done on the P card with the exception of the rider.
I think, I think that sounds right. I, I do think they've gotten a little fussier with P card stuff, but most of what you've identified, uh, Ms. Green, I think would be fine. I, I, I think what I'm hearing here, and, and please, if I'm not right, let me know, is that that this end of year stuff is probably in the region of of three to four thousand dollars? Is, is that what the council is contemplating?
Yes, if we're looking at both the, um, award ceremony that we will be having, award ceremony dinner, that's one night, a separate event, and then the end of the year event.
Okay, so I'm going to use round numbers here, if that's okay, council, just because I've been trying to do some back of the napkin calculations. So basically, of your member reimbursements, you're planning to hold about sixteen thousand, fifteen thousand nine hundred in member reimbursements, three thousand for the annual report, two hundred for the AA's travel, if that comes up, about seven hundred dollars for supplies. And then that leaves a difference of about five thousand dollars, but you guys have spent some money already, right? So we, we're not sure what that is.
It was thirty-six, thirty-nine about before.
Okay.
I'm not sure how many new, um, reimbursements have already been processed.
All right, so that, see, that's, that's the treasurer giving the hard numbers. I appreciate that. So are we talking about putting what's left over into the P card and then, um, working with the council? Like, as you guys figure out what you're doing, working with you to pay for it? Or is there another line or another area? Again, I'm not forcing you into a vote, I'm just trying to get an understand, understanding of what I'm hearing. And Kamal and Roberto, like, is, is my mental math sort of adding up in your minds too? Nothing like putting you on the spot, sorry.
So, so council members, um, Ms. Angel, um, we need a motion to move back to the P card, um, the money. So we want to respect everybody's time, so if somebody want to put a motion for this.
I move to, um, I don't want to say that. I move to move all of the reallocated funds except for the three thousand dollars to the annual rider, back to the P card.
Can I get a second?
I second that.
Okay, questions, discussions, anybody?
Motion is what again, please? Repeat it.
Can you repeat?
I move to move all of the reallocated items except for the, what is it, annual report rider, three thousand dollars to the P card line.
Could you just specify also include the two hundred for fare, whatever's left over in other categories in the motion, please? Okay, reimbursements, within reimbursements, the, you, we, you want everything moved, correct? Reallocated from when? That's why I said, could you just specify in your motion exactly what is going to be left in what category? Thank you.
Make a paragraph? I'm not understanding what you're asking me. Are you saying to say, I move to move three hundred dollars back from the P card, one thousand dollars back?
I'm trying to say that you're asking for reallocation of funds that were moved, correct? Just specify what would be left in the other categories, reimbursements, two hundred for fare, and then three thousand for rider, that's all. And the aren't those the other things left, correct?
I think you lost me a little bit, two thousand.
No, I said, I just want a specification in your, in your motion. The specification of the funds that would be left in other allocations. What the reimbursement except the allocation for reimbursement, the three thousand for the annual, for the annual report, and the two hundred for, uh, two hundred for the car fare plus what is left in supply, okay? I don't know how much that is.
Well, there's more, there's more line items than just those, though, that are being moved around. That's why I was thinking.
Okay, I wasn't aware of this.
Wouldn't be moved, and then the, okay, so, I mean, we can go, we can make it along when I can try to
You can, you can put out your motion as is. I wasn't aware there are the line items that haven't been mentioned here. Thank you for letting me know.
No, 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 they were the ones that were mentioned. I'm just looking at the small screen and trying to word this appropriately. I know that we want to keep three thousand in three thousand, the motion would be to move three thousand as a line item for the annual report rider. To leave the one thousand dollars on the P card. To leave two hundred dollars for travel. And all remaining funds go to the P card. I'm hoping that was correct. That's what I'm thinking I'm seeing online.
Yes.
Don't you still have funds in supply, though, out of the seven hundred?
Right, so that's why I'm saying, that's why I said all of the other allocations that were reallocated go to the P card outside of the two hundred dollars.
Just go back to your original motion, it's fine, because you're not understanding me and it's going to
Let me, I want to, I do want to, I do want to understand. So you want me to say move the three hundred for the rider? That the two hundred stays
That's not what I wanted you to say. That's why I said, go back to your original motion, you're much more comfortable with it. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if it's about comfortable, I just want to make sure I have it accurate.
Yeah, I'm, I asked the same question as you, Constance, so Christie, as treasurer, can you be more specific?
Yes, I actually can. Let me slow down and start now.
Okay.
I move. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. I don't want to break your stride.
No, I'm like, anybody who wants to jump in and do it better than me with the motion, I'm, I'm happy to, um, you know, move aside. But I move that we make a separate line item for the rider for three thousand dollars. I move that we keep the two hundred dollars in trans, um, I can't see the word. For the A, for the AA.
How much for two hundred?
Yes, in the remaining items is what we're referring to. I move that we keep the one sixty-four, sixty-eight in supplies. I move that one thousand stays with the P card. And that the remaining, I don't, I don't know, are there any other remaining funds? Then that would every, that would be what's going to the P card, one thousand stays with the P card. I'm, I'm blowing this motion up, so. Yeah, I want to do it better, but I, I can't see, we're only moving to three thousand, one thousand stays.
So the member re, the member reimbursement stays, the supplies gets moved to the P card. The local travel is, is now two hundred? Because what we had was three hundred.
So the, the total original allocated was five hundred, and if I understand
So then let's do, we can just move the one thousand six hundred and sixty, it's not that, we're taking out the two hundred, five hundred. We're not moving them. No, that's right. So then we can just make the one thousand six hundred, two thousand. Keep the one hundred, keep, so what we would do, it keep, is keeping the one thousand on the P card. And then moving the sixteen hundred to the P card, three thousand as a one-line item. Correct, Shona? Is that, those are three things that I would want to put in? I'm just, at this, at this time, my mind's like
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think, yes, I think we're getting there. So really, it's like, you, you're, you're moving to not reduce the amount of the P card, so that it remains at two thousand, right? We're reducing travel by three hundred and moving that three hundred to the P card. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
We're taking what's left over from the supplies, which is hundred and sixty-four dollars, and also moving that to the P card. And we are moving three thousand dollars for member reimbursements to a separate line item to cover the cost of the annual report rider.
Right, so with that first motion not have worked, that all of the reallocations except for the three thousand dollars for the rider going to the P card.
I, I do not pretend to be an expert in motions, but I, I, I think, I think we are all saying perhaps the same thing, it's just a matter of morality of the language, right? But is, is, is that, is that what the intention is? Like, does that make sense to every, to, to this council? We just want to, okay.
I'm a little, so the three thousand that we're moving from member reimbursements to the annual report, does that reduce it from sixteen thousand to thirteen thousand?
No, no, that's, I don't think so, because you already vote, the council already voted on that last meeting.
Right. So we're not moving anything from member reimbursements?
No, you, you are correct.
Okay.
You are correct. Basically, we're scooping up all of these other little things and, and putting them onto the P card.
And we already have three thousand for the annual report, the annual report, we don't have to mess with that.
I, I would defer to the council and the expertise in the council, but, but that, our understanding from your vote is that that money was already voted on and and you guys decided what to do with it.
So, so the member reimbursement stays the same, the annual report stays the same, the P card stays at two thousand. So the only thing that we're doing is, um, adding to the P card, we're adding three hundred from travel. We're adding leftover supplies, one sixty-four, sixty-eight. We're adding the sixteen hundred for parent involvement. And we're also adding three thousand from the end of the year and the conference. All of that, I mean, I could add it up and do the math.
Just to, I don't mean to, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can speak. At the bottom with the reallocation request, that's where we had broken it up, where we did our motion for the, that, you know, the sixteen hundred would go into parent involvement, and the annual report rider would be there. And then there's the, the breakup of the, every, basically, the recommendations where the, where those four thousand isn't, what does that say, three thousand dollars? With the parent involvement, it was just how we moved the money, and we took, I guess maybe we didn't take the recommendation, the recommendation in detail enough. I thought the form was clear enough. I do give the council my apologies. So I guess the best way to say it would almost be to maybe type it, maybe I should type it out in the chat, so that then it can be read.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms., um, I recognize Ms. Green hanging real quick.
I just wanted to say, I think our treasurer did it, did it right, because she was saying, um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Christie, you were saying that anything that is, uh, that was reallocated the last time that we voted on, that is not, with the exception of the annual report rider, which will stay in whatever category that stays in, everything else. So that the two thousand for parent involvement at the end of the year, the one thousand for the CCD seventy-five conference, the one thousand six hundred for the parent involvement, other than that, all of that, plus the two hundred for travel, uh, and whatever else is left, would go back to the P card, would go onto the P card.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion. I'm, I so moved that that happened. And so, or I second it, because you made the motion to begin with, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sue.
We in the middle of a motion, so so Any comments?
Um, so by my calculations, what'll be left is the new numbers that'll be, it'll be two hundred for travel, three thousand for annual report, the fifteen thousand eight ninety-nine for member reimbursements. Uh, and then the P card, uh, we would add just over five thousand dollars to the P card to make it seven thousand dollars, like seven thousand sixty-five. Those are the new numbers that I'm coming up with.
All right. So are there any other questions around the motion that was put out there?
Sorry, it's been stated, can it just be repeated before we vote? Thank you.
All right, can you go again with your motion, um, Ms. Green or Sue, or Christie Angel?
I move that all the allocations be placed onto the P card and a line item be created for the annual report rider in the amount of three thousand dollars.
I second that.
You heard it, Constance?
I heard it, Mr. Lawrence, okay. It's not specifically what Ms., um, Ms. Green said. Go ahead.
So are there any other questions or abstention to this motion? All right. Ms. Maltemal, can you do the roll call, please?
We're voting on the motion to move all re, oh, I'm sorry. Is there a way someone can type this out for me? Because it's really hard for me to get the exact wording right on the form, because it's, every time someone repeats it, it's a little different. So for record purposes, I would like to have the correct motion. Is there a way, can you type it?
Yes.
Do you need me to continue to share my screen or, or move it or anything like that?
No, I would just like the person, uh, Christie.
Me, I'll try to type it in quickly for the, um,
Okay, thank you, just so I can read it correctly and it doesn't get
Hello, is the chat open to everyone's view?
Um, I can't, I can't
Can't see a thing.
It's something
Can we open up the chat, please?
The chat is, the, the chat is open, Constance.
Okay, it's saying direct message, so I don't
Yeah, it's, it's open. It says everyone, yeah. It's open.
Okay.
Okay, so we are
A little bit easier. Can we, um, uh, just, Constance, are you okay? Is that, is that okay in regard to breaking it down?
Reason why I'm asking for specifics, whenever we do any budgetary item, it actually, when we're going to vote on any part of the budget, it has to be specific as to each individual item, since we are voting on shifting several items. That's why I asked for that. Okay, normally, people do resolutions for budgets. We actually just vote on them, do, uh, you know. But, uh, it has to be specific, because we are now changing it for the last time, just as you did last time when you voted on it. You had all the items allocated and you voted on them based on it. That's why I asked for specifics.
Oh, we actually voted, um, to take the recommendation of the presentation. That's what, with the last
That's what you voted last time. As I said, I wasn't on the meeting, I couldn't hear you ninety percent of the time, that's why I didn't vote on the motion, okay? All right, as I said, the item should, it should be actually itemized on what we're voting on whenever we do budgetary items, just so it's understood.
I don't want to hold everyone up, but if everyone wants to wait for me to type it and give me a moment, I can type it up line by line, whatever the council's pleasure may be.
Um, I, I think it's proven, just so we won't have to circle back.
One moment. One moment.
And, um, just to answer Constance's point, like, um, I, I have the reallocation, the final numbers, and Christie, I want to reply that with you. Because that's, I mean.
Ms, Mr. Spencer, uh, we need to make for a motion because we over our time. So we need to ask council members, could they give unto, uh, eight thirty to finish this? So, we are over time. We are supposed to be finished at seven thirty. So, council members, if okay with you for us to rectify this, can I have a motion to, um, be finished by eight thirty P M?
Mr. Lawrence, you have to suspend this motion because you're in the middle of it. You can't call for another one.
Do you, what you say?
To table the current motion.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I forget we, and I mean, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Constance.
Yeah, so I guess, um, we're going to suspend the current motion right now while Christie is, um, typing it up and um, we're looking for a motion to extend this meeting no later than eight thirty P M.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion?
I'm sorry, but the parliamentarian just said we're in the middle of a motion, so we can't do another motion until this is.
That's why I requested, do they want to table the current motion? It has to be the people that motioned it. Have to rescind it until we're prepared for it.
Um, yeah, that's what he did. Yeah, that's what he was asking for.
Right.
Okay.
Christie and Sonia, are you okay?
Sorry, I'm multitasking and I was on mute. I rescind my current motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Green, be second.
I don't think I have to second because she rescinded it.
Alright, so as for a motion to extend to eight thirty.
I motioned that we extend until eight thirty. Uh, I'm, I motioned that we extend this special CCD seventy-five meeting until eight thirty or until we are otherwise finished with this budget.
I second that.
Questions, any discussions? Ms. Maltemar, can you do the roll call?
Yes, so we are voting to extend this special meeting to eight thirty P M or beyond to finish the budget discussion. Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Angel?
Yes.
Ms. Christie Montevan, yes. Mr. Angel Morales?
He may be gone.
Yeah, he was at school's, yeah.
Oh, okay. Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Joanne Jones? Ms. Patricia Jewitt? Ms. Jewitt?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. I didn't realize that. Thank you, yes.
Hey, and Ms. Constance, see you do.
Yes.
Um, I recognize Amy there.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven votes for, yes, the motion has passed.
You forgot Amy, Amy's here.
You did announce that she joined the meeting when she.
Yeah, they, yeah, she was announced.
Oh, yeah, whether she announced or not, we got to make sure we recognize her.
Can you give me the time she came in, please, for the record?
She came in.
Approximately six forty-three P M. That's when I let her in.
Also want to clarify for you, Ms. Montevan. I also came in at six forty-seven. Sorry, after you took roll call. Sorry, I should have noted that for you.
Okay, you, uh, Ms. Amy, uh, Ms. Amy, can I have your vote on extending the meeting to eight thirty?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight votes for yes, the motion has passed.
Thank you.
I believe the motion, I'm ready now. I move that we create a three thousand dollar line item on, uh, for the annual report, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents from the supplies line to the P card, one thousand to remain on the P card, three hundred for AA travel to be moved to the P card, three hundred from food costs to be moved to the P card.
Three hundred? There's an item for three hundred?
I believe that's the.
Three thousand to cover the.
Right, that's what I thought, three thousand, not three.
Yes, three thousand, it's not three hundred.
This written, okay. Need this written.
Yep.
When, I'm sorry, what do you, we're moving the three thousand for the rider. You're saying that everything.
No, 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 we're talking about. Isn't that what they're asking us to do?
Yes, it is.
Wanted.
It's what they.
This is all about.
Right, so then my original motion would be the reallocated funds to go to the P card.
And as I said, in your motion for any kind of motion concerning the budget, you have to itemize the items.
Okay, so let me ask a quick question. So as I, as I've itemized in the chat, are you saying that I need to additionally add in the three thousand, um, the, the monies for parent involvement? That forty-six hundred to be?
I thought that's what Sha- Shona and them were specifically stating about.
Right, so that's what, that's what I had moved as, and he said to go specific, so I'm trying to figure out which numbers to include.
Also moving those funds onto the P card, are you not? And that's not in what you've written. That's what I'm stating.
Ah, got you. So the.
You understand me? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, I got the forty-six hundred is the last line.
Right, that's all I'm asking you to do. You just have to itemize it, that's all. If you write it, whatever. So it'll be clear, so we don't have this problem again, please. Thank you. Sorry to bother you, but have to.
No, don't worry. Um, so let me see where our lines would be in parent involvement. The three forty-six, okay. Lord, bless the movement. I move that we move the forty-six hundred dollars from parent involvement to the P card. I move that we create a three thousand dollar line item for our annual report writer. I move that the one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents from the supplies line goes to the P card. I move that one thousand dollars remains on the P card. I move that three hundred dollars from the AA travel goes to the P card. And three hundred dollars from the food cost goes to the P card.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, discussions?
Um, Constance, are you good? Um, I just want to state for the record, like, basically what Christie just said, by my calculations, the final line items will be seven, roughly seven thousand dollars for the P card, three thousand dollars for the annual report, rough, just under sixteen thousand dollars for member reimbursements and two hundred dollars for travel. That'll leave us roughly twenty-six thousand dollars left to spend in the, the school year.
I'm sorry.
After all the, all the funds, all the funds are moved, just like Christine stated, the final numbers will be seven thousand dollars in the P card, three thousand dollars for the annual report, because she asked for a specific line for the annual report, that's why. Um, sixteen thousand dollars for member reimbursement, just under that, and two hundred dollars for travel.
Are you saying that totals twenty-six thousand in all? I'm sorry.
Roughly, roughly twenty-six.
Cannot, our budget is twenty-five, so you couldn't have gotten that number. There has to be some discrepancy.
Um, then.
I think he's just doing extra math. The forty-six hundred dollars is all of the reallocations. I just broke down what the reallocations were in the, um, in the move, in the motion, excuse me. I'm not sure what you just read off.
Council, may, may I make a suggestion? Because I, I also think that adding this up is a little bit complicated because we don't know, right, we don't have an exact number of how much the council has already spent. Um, and so it sounds to me that if we move these funds, then we, we can come back and let you know what is, what has been spent on reimbursement, what is left on reimbursement, what has been spent on supplies, what is left for supplies. Would that be helpful?
As of March, we were at thirty-six eighty-nine on, when we had our meeting. And we still had people, um, who had not, I can send you what I have as far as our projections and as far as what we actually have in real time. Well, actually, touch base with Ramona to see who else has been cleared, but I can show you what I have in addition to what maybe she has already had processed, and then, you know, the thirty-six eighty-nine is where we were. Some other things have come in since then, but everything would be technically accounted for within the budget. We wouldn't have additional funds to spend.
Okay, so I, I think that perhaps the number that may be incorrect is what would go to the P card, but I think that we have enough information with this motion to know where the this council wants the money to go, right?
Right.
Well, well, the motion ain't passed yet, Shauna. We were still in the mix of the motion.
No, I, I understand that. I, I'm just, I'm trying to think through this, um.
So, let me, then let me.
Okay.
Let me see.
Actually, we're in the middle of the.
Yeah, we in the middle of the.
Unless someone specifically asks for you to comment, you actually cannot comment because you're not a council member. My apologies, council.
Yeah, so are there any other questions?
I'm just going to apologize. Looks like my math is wrong.
Okay, alright. Ms. Maltemar, proceed with the motion.
Okay, so this is the motion I have written down. I just want to make sure it's correct before we vote on it. In our council budget, we can get a three thousand line for annual report, one hundred and sixty-four eighty-eight from supplies to P card, a thousand to remain on P card, three hundred from AA travel to P card, and three hundred from food cost to P card, and forty-six hundred move from parent involvement to P card. Is that correct for the motion?
Um, no, that, I, that was my typo. It, the total that is moving is the sixteen hundred dollars.
Send your motion for me. I'm sorry, I got to get it right on the form.
I'll copy and paste what you, what you sent and I'll give it back to you.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I have everything correct.
We'll have it in two seconds. Okay, yeah. Forty-six, yeah, that is forty. Two forty-six. No, yeah, that's right, Christie. I'm sorry, my man, my mind is fried, y'all forgive me. The forty-six hundred move from parent involvement to P card, the way that it is written, I move that our council create a line item for three thousand dollars for an annual report, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents from supplies to the P card, one thousand to remain on the P card, three thousand from AA travel to P card, and three hundred from food cost to P card, and four thousand move from parent involvement to the P card.
That's not what I have, right. I'm sorry, Christie. You said three thousand from AA travel to P card? And then you said four thousand from parent involvement.
I'm going to copy and paste this from our chat and just move it over to this chat. Give me one second. Do you see why I just text you, um, in our chat, Christie?
No, I'm sorry, I don't see.
In our, no, in our text messages.
I don't, no, I, I don't have a message from you. I'm sorry. Can you just type it in?
No, what you said is this correct, that is correct, yes.
Oh, okay, so what I just read.
Yes, and I thought, yeah, when you, I thought it was, I misheard the last number, so that's me.
Let me repeat it again and everybody can tell me if this is the correct motion we're voting on. In our council budget, we create a three thousand dollar line for annual report, one hundred and sixty-four eighty-eight from supplies to P card, a thousand to remain on P card, three hundred from AA travel to P card, and three hundred from food cost to P card, and forty-six hundred move from parent involvement to P card. That is the correct motion we're voting on now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Are we ready to take a roll call or do we discuss anything? I can do the roll call now? We're ready for that?
I have a question. What is the total amount that's in the P card that would be allocated?
Are you asking me to add the line items up again, or what do you, what is the question?
No, just the total money, what is the total amount for?
Forty-six hundred dollars over from parent involvement and all the other items that are listed right there, the one sixty-four, the one thousand three hundred, those numbers together with the forty-six hundred. So, I mean, I can take a moment now and add those numbers up together, but I don't have it in my minds. I currently, one second. So, seven forty-nine, seventeen forty-nine, seventeen forty-nine. Six hundred. Plus forty-six hundred. Seven thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-eight cents unless I've done my math wrong.
Miss, miss, uh, Ms. Angel, uh, council member Angel, can you go line by line? I think that will help, um, give some clarification to how much money is going to be in each line because the numbers have came up crazy multiple times. So maybe if you could go line by line for the record.
Absolutely. Um, I haven't had them come back multiple times, but, um, I'm always open for phone calls if you guys want to include or ask me different questions, but we don't have it to mix up.
No, no, just for, um, the public, you know, for we can know what's happening here.
Absolutely, we can do that again. So currently, as you can see, I mean, I'm not sharing the screen anymore.
I can make you a co-host, therefore we could get on. So, if you could, because we was in the middle of, of motion, could we, uh, withdraw, you know, take back your motion until we just get.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I'm going to make you a co-host, therefore everybody could see what you're.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Therefore, we can move on. There you go.
Able.
Yeah, you're, you're co-host, you should be. Yeah, you're co-host.
Okay, hold on. Which one are we on, this one? Okay, so this is what was currently being shared. So, one thousand dollars, to be clear, one thousand is remaining in our P card. One thousand dollars. We have used two hundred and fifty-one dollars. So there is an additional seven hundred and forty-nine dollars still on. So there is an additional seven hundred and forty-nine dollars still on the P card. We are moving one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents from supplies to the P card. We are moving three hundred dollars from supplies to the P card. We are moving three hundred from food cost to the P card. And we are moving the forty-six hundred from parent involvement to the P card. That creates seven thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Um, I have, I have six thousand one hundred and thirty-three, one thousand less.
Right. Also.
There's one thousand that we didn't need to.
That was on it already?
There's one thousand on the card already. Amy, give me your, anybody else that wants to give their math, hey, my brain is fried.
I'm sorry. I know your brain is fried. It's, you remove, you've said surprise twice was the other three hundred, the travel. That's all I wanna know. Okay?
In the line item adjustment here, these are the numbers that we originally voted on.
Right.
So, we paid for the five hundred and thirty-five dollars. We moved these numbers out ahead of time, which would leave the one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents, which could be moved. We also were moving out three hundred dollars. So we're moving all of that back on, or basically if they haven't moved this three hundred, then it's still there.
I'm sorry, Miss Angel, that's, you clarified that quite, it was quite clear. That's not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry.
Speaking, you said what was left in supply, you were moving to the P card. Then you said an additional three hundred from supply, and I said, were you actually quoting the money from the travel, the three hundred that's going to supply? You just said supply again in error. That's all I wanna clarify.
Thank you for pointing out. That I can be better. I do not mind correcting.
No, 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 no. As you said, you've been going on and on. I understand. I just wanna be clear. That's the figure you were talking about, that three hundred from travel.
So if we can go here.
Yeah.
So the office supplies, the one sixty-four that's remaining can be gone to the P card. That is correct. We're not moving anything else from the P card. It's staying the same. The three hundred dollars here, can everybody see that or is that too small? I'm sorry. I'm trying to make it so that we can read across at the same time. All right, so three thousand dollars from reimbursement is gonna go to the writer. I'm reading from the bottom up. Three hundred from this local travel and meeting expense. That is coming from, that is a part of the forty-six hundred dollars. Jesus Christ, I am frazzled. Guys, forgive me. So this item, this yellow line item, the forty-six hundred dollars, this is what we voted on to reallocations. That is what I was quoting as the forty-six hundred for the parent involvement that was moving to the P card. The breakdowns that are remaining, the one sixty-four sixty-eight from supplies is what's moving to the P card. One thousand never is going to be moved from the P card because they haven't moved it yet. Two hundred from local meeting, that food item, this is being moved to the P card. The sixty dollars remained, six hundred was moved already over here. So the items that are moving is this forty-six hundred dollar line in parent involvement to the P card. It's the one sixty-four sixty-eight that's remaining from the supplies is going back to the P card. One thousand dollars that we voted to move is not leaving the P card. So I guess basically if we're doing, maybe that's to Amy's point. If the one thousand dollars has not been moved, no point of having it in the adjustment line. So the correction would be that the thirty-six hundred dollars in parent involvement is moved to the P card as the one thousand dollars never left, which would then make the math that Amy gave, a thousand dollars less to six thousand one hundred, or whatever your number was, if you could repeat it, Amy, that would be our number on the P card. Six thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, or I don't know if you have a different number than that, but that would be the the math.
It might be a little lower than that, Miss Angel, because I think Shawna had said earlier that the office supply came up to a little more than what we had projected. I think she said five hundred and.
Forty something?
Yes, yes, yes. So just wanna get that right number for you to adjust how much the remaining balance is and.
It would only be a couple of dollars. Like here, right now, we have seventeen. The remaining balance right now is seventeen, seven forty-nine, unless we have the change that comes out. If we round that down, if it's four dollars, seventeen forty-five is what would technically be on there. Mrs. Sia do does have her hand.
Yeah, I just saw it go up. Yeah, constantly.
Yeah, no, you can have, if Shawna wants to speak now, she was trying to say something, she can speak now, we're no longer in the middle of a motion. Okay, I just wanted to say that. So you can allow her to speak if she wants.
Oh, thank you. I, I'm fine. I don't, I don't have anything to say at this point, but thank you. I appreciate it.
What was that number you had gave earlier for supplies, Shawna?
I was just looking that up for you.
Yeah.
Um, so give me a moment. But it was three hundred and seventy, you know what, let me, let me not make it up. Let me just find that for you, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, council, the, the, the statement that Ramona sent us was for five hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Do you want me to put that exact number in the chat?
Yeah, please. Constance, you're hanging up from before or it's up again?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lawrence. I'll take it down. Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
All right, that, that number is in the chat now.
Thank you. Miss Angel, the flow is yours.
Well, there's a twelve dollar and forty cents difference. So, hold on. I'm sorry, what is the secondary question you guys are asking me again? Was it somebody asking me what is left in the P card? Is that what you're asking me? I'm lost.
No, I think Constance wanted clarification on, you said, office supplies two times. She wanted to know was the other three hundred dollars you talking about coming from the traveling expense for the AA? Correct me if I'm wrong, Constance, was that?
Yeah, that's what I had asked.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all. That's going into the P card.
Yeah. So right there where you are.
And also, Ms. Sai asked her for the total that would be in the P card afterwards.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna acknowledge. Yep, Amy asked for that.
So can I just have my, have the clarification? So it would, the remaining of P card currently is seventeen hundred and forty-five, adding the parent involvement of thirty-six hundred, the one hundred and sixty-four sixty-eight cents from supplies will be moved into the P card. Three hundred dollars will be removed, will be moved from the transportation for the AA to the P card, and three hundred dollars for food to the P card. My calculations come up as six thousand one hundred and nine and sixty-eight cents. Is that correct?
I don't think so. I think we're on two different pages. So the forty-six hundred, the thirty-six hundred dollars here is what's moved from parent involvement. That's what I broke down. So basically, our motion is gonna be longer. I'm gonna be breaking down every single thing that makes up, or just say the thirty-six hundred dollars, and then go to the remaining amounts, and then say a motion for all of the remaining amounts that are being moved here to the P card. So we can have a really long motion and then break that down. It'll just be a longer type out.
Yeah, but my question is, what is the total amount that we're expecting in the P card after this, um, everything has been moved to the P card?
Didn't you just go through the line items for that? Are you asking me to?
Yeah, I have six thousand one hundred and nine sixty-eight cents.
So if you add thirty-six hundred plus the seventeen thirty-seven that's in there, that is what's currently thirty, seventeen thirty-seven is on the card. You're gonna add that with the thirty-six hundred plus the sixteen, one sixty-four sixty-eight, two hundred dollars. And that's what you would have as your, I'm like, are you guys asking me to do math and like put it on the, in that way, like, right now with the? Forgive me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very, very honest. I do not mind doing this. Please don't take any of my frustration that way. But in having the meeting, there was a meeting prior to this that I was not privy to in full totality. And so there's questions that I didn't know were gonna be kind of thrown out. I don't mind, but I would have preferred to be a little bit more prepared for the meeting. Um, I feel a little bit unprepared, so I apologize to anyone who thinks that I am. Now we'll go back and try to do math. I'm a little frazzled, so forgive me.
I think what she's asking you is what the total of the P card.
I understand that. I have a calculator in front of me, a little bit frazzled. She just called the numbers out. So I'm asking her, she asking me to redo those numbers again, that, you know, but if, if you need me to, I'll sit here and do the math unless somebody wants to go through a calculator as I call out the numbers and assist me in doing that. If not, then I'll go through.
She, she had gave you the number. I guess she just wanna know if that's what you gained, because that's the same number I got too, what Amy got.
It is. I did say earlier before we repeated this, that the thousand dollars, bringing it down from the four hundred is there, but I have no idea where we're going back and forth with this right now. I'm really trying to understand.
No worries. Can, can Craig just stick the calculator and calculate just so that we have a a sense of idea of the total amount for the P card?
I would, but I'm on my way home, so I'm walking. Let me just find a place to stop and add up. And just for the record, Treasure Angel, there was nothing excluding, the, the meeting wasn't excluded, you, which, that's why Shawna, Mr. Tillman, and Mr. Kamal are on this call, because we were transparent. There was nothing that, when we found, when Mr. Lawrence and I found this information, we asked for a special meeting. So we're, we're just as frazzled as you.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, and again, in all transparency, I was called into a meeting with you guys that was on Zoom that I was not scheduled to be a part of, and then you guys called me because there was a misunderstanding. So I'm just saying, it would have helped if I could have been a little bit prepared in those different things that I was excluded out of.
You're absolutely correct. And when we had the information, that's why we asked them to call, because we can't speak for you. And, yeah, so, you know, like I said, we're just as frazzled as you are. So, um, I just wanna make it known that when Mr. Lawrence and I found this out, this impromptu meeting happened, included the treasurer, and then we found out we're still at impasse, and that's where we're at tonight. So we weren't trying to exclude you from, from, from this at all. Just wanna make sure that's clear. All right, so.
Um, Kamal from in the chat says, he just wanna make sure that three thousand is for the vendor for the writing. It's a question.
Um, yes, three thousand is for the vendor for writing.
All right, so I gotta calculate it out. Go ahead.
Can I just ask?
That isn't going over to the P card. So seventeen thirty.
Probably allocated when you all voted for the vendor, for the writing, the annual.
To my knowledge, yes.
Right, so, okay. I just wanna understand that, what that keeps coming up. If you already placed it in the line item it was supposed to be at.
Right. We have not done that as yet. Yeah, I'm sorry. We have not moved the three thousand to the line item as yet for that vendor. So the three thousand you see on the spreadsheet. Right, have not. So the three thousand you see on the spreadsheet of that thirty-six hundred, or whatever that total is, that three thousand cannot go on the P card because it belongs, you know, elsewhere.
To the annual. Thank you. I'm glad you came on to clarify. Okay, so that item has not been moved. Okay, none of the, there were no movements on anything that was voted on. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And that's what we're redoing right now. Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that point. So there's things in places that are being counted that are going to be moved somewhere else. All right, thank you very much. That's why I wanted specifics in the motion to understand exactly what is going on.
Right, so the three thousand would be a separate line item for the annual writer. That part is clear and separate for itself. The other three thirty.
They have not moved it yet, so it's part of whatever monies we're discussing now. That's what he's just come on and said. Okay. So we're discussing moving to the P card.
Right, so that three thousand, the three thousand highlighted right now in your, in your highlight, that three thousand belongs to, we need to use that three thousand to pay for that writer. So that the three thousand has not been moved for the writers yet. That's the three thousand that's highlighted there.
No, no, it's not. Are we, what are we talking about here?
So I'm saying, we've not made any changes as yet. The changes you guys requested, including the three thousand to be moved from that particular line item in yellow to a separate line to pay for the, the vendor for the writing has not been done. So.
Okay.
That, yeah.
So let's, let's start from the very beginning. In that bottom box, right? The three thousand dollars from the thirty-six hundred dollars there, where we have three thousand from reimbursements is going to the annual writer. That leaves sixteen hundred dollars. That sixteen hundred dollars is over here with parent. Sixteen hundred.
Well, it's thirty-six that's there, so if you subtract three thousand from the thirty-six.
It was because of the original one thousand. So technically, it's that one thousand from the P card.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Okay, so since you're not moving a thousand from the P card.
It would be the six hundred, correct.
Right, correct, correct. So then it would be that three hundred and the other three hundred to the P card, and whatever other balances you wanted to move to the P card, but not that three thousand.
Correct. So the six hundred would move to parent involvement. One thousand that is supposed to be, that was moving to parent involvement stays on P card. Two thousand is already in parent involvement. So this would be so two thousand is already in parent involvement. One thousand of our parent involvement is on the P card. So that's how this is seen. Does that make sense to everybody? Or would it make sense for me to just remove this one thousand and just know that that's the thousand on the P card? I'll do that. So that there's two thousand in parent involvement on the line there. That's where we are. Actually, all of this can just go. So parent involvement has six hundred that's moving from reimbursement. Annual report is gonna get a line for three thousand dollars. One sixty-four eighty-eight is moving to the P card. The two hundred is moving to the P card from the food, uh, travel and food refreshments. And then that sixty dollars and sixty-three cents stays in reimbursement. Is that a little bit more clear before we do the math of what's left on the P card? I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Row twenty-four, we have three thousand.
On number twenty-four?
A row twenty-four.
Yes.
Change that to minus thirty-six hundred.
Okay.
Okay. And just as a placeholder, stick three hundred on line twenty, three thousand on line twenty-six.
Twenty, here?
Put, plus. Put, put plus three thousand.
Ooh, hold on. I'm sorry, my eyes are just terrible tonight. So three thousand here.
Plus three thou, but above it, it's minus thirty six hundred, not thirty six hundred.
Sorry. Got you. Oh God, why is it getting me? Alright, now what was the other? Oh wait, why did that? I think it's because I have a formula in it. You want me to, so you want me to put a minus?
I want you to put a minus thirty six hundred there.
When I put the minus, it gives me, okay, there you go.
Okay, and then we're just, as a placeholder, just leave on twenty five, put plus three thousand. Cause that's where the, that's where the money for your report writer is gonna come from, from this mod. Alright, so now so there's six hundred doll, there's six, this, this other six hundred dollars that you're saying you're taking from the local travel.
Where you at, over?
Uh, row twenty three, make that a minus three hundred. Oh, I'm sorry, twenty two. My mistake. Okay, and then, uh, up on supplies, you said you were taking out three hundred? Make that a minus three hundred. Okay, so that means from, from, from these actions, there's twelve hundred that you could move on to the P card. Now the thing to consider is, is that twelve hundred enough for what your intentions are? Cause whenever we do a modification, it's, it's a zero sum game. The pluses have to equal the minuses. So in the current condition, you could add twelve hundred to the P card.
And we're moving the parent involvement to the P card. Do we not just?
Okay, well then, then you wanna, uh, the parent involvement, then you would do a minus two thousand. Then that would give you thirty two hundred that you could add to the P card.
And you're taking this six hundred out, right? Yes.
Uh, well, the six hundred, um, you got from
Yeah, I'm taking.
Doing the minus three hundred to minus three hundred, that's sort of oh no, wait, no wait, the thirties, the six hundred came from here minus minus thirty six hundred, here's three thousand. So there's six hundred that you wanted to add to the P card.
And then you have over here, the, the one sixty four that was remaining and that's from supplies. That's being moved over to the P card.
Nothing has been moved on to, wait.
Being, being, ing, I N G. I mean, we, this is
So if you wanna move that one sixty four from there, then you're gonna say it minus one sixty four and you can't really move mods in cents. So it's either one sixty four or one sixty five. So you'd make that four sixty four.
Right, okay, four sixty four.
And no, what, what you said you would take, oh, you're only taking two hundred from, uh, the local travel or three hundred?
It was initially, we were leaving these numbers in, but now that we're being, you know, after this conversation, these numbers are, you know, the additional numbers are moving to the P card.
So that means you're moving, you're taking out five hundred. You're not leaving anything on the local travel. You said you're gonna put it all on the P card?
I mean, isn't that the understanding of the council that it's moving to the P card so that it could be used easier?
No, no, no.
Travel.
Not for local.
Okay, then, alright, then.
So if you take that three hundred from the local travel, that will leave two hundred available for use through the end of the year.
That's correct.
So these pluses of, uh, now there's sixty dollars and sixty three cents.
That was remaining to move anywhere, so that was sixty sixty three that just stayed in reimbursements.
You just wanna leave it in reimbursements that?
It can go anywhere they want it to go. Um, yeah, it's in, that's the line it's on for right now. It can go to
Well, when, when we remove the thirty six hundred, uh, are you gonna have, are you gonna have this fifteen eight ninety nine? Or fifteen eight, fifteen nine available?
Yes.
Okay. So then if you wanna do that, you can make it minus thirty six sixty. And that would leave sixty three cents here. So then in theory, we would be able to move thirty two, I can't even see that, thirty two sixty, we can add that to the P card.
I'm sorry. Alright, which part do you want? I'm sorry, my son is
Go to the P card line.
The thousand dollars?
And you're gonna add, and you're gonna add thirty two sixty.
It's our two thousand dollar line thirty two.
Okay, so now all your increases and decreases balance out. And so after this mod, uh, with your projection, you're gonna say you have sixty dollars and change left at the end of the year. You'll have two hundred left in local travel. You will have forgetting about the expenditures, uh, oh, there were no expenditures on the P card. You'd end up having fifty two sixty available on the P card. And there would be seven hundred for supplies minus whatever was spent. So I guess that's the sixty four sixty eight.
Yeah.
So I guess, I, so the, um, so that should be, this should, these should be the adjustments that you're making. And the only question is, is the amount of money that's now on the P card, is that gonna be sufficient for everything that you're gonna do?
They want an accurate number for the amount on P card. So our accurate number for the amount on the P card is what?
It, it would be uh, it would be fifty two sixty minus whatever was spent on the P card already.
Even with moving the parent involvement over?
Scroll over to the parent invol, no, yeah, we, cause here's, here's the two thousand, you're moving from the parent involvement. Because in your conversations, it sounded like you were adding more money than you were removing. That's why it's got, got very confusing.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know which conversation you had that was adding more than removing. That's where I'm a little, I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
Well, I mean, even the conversation tonight, you, you know, trying to say, well, we'll move the balance. So the easiest way is to, to really just look at it like this as a zero sum game. So you, the pluses on your mods equal your minuses. So if you haven't spent any money on the P card, then once the adjustment is done, there would be five thousand two hundred sixty dollars available.
Well, there should be one thousand seven hundred and thirty seven. Where are you get, on the P card? I'm a little, I'm lost now.
No, and I was, I, I said, well, there's two thou, well, it was two thou, so you're saying the balance was seventeen thirty seven on the P card? That's the current balance?
The balance, she only spent two hundred and fifty one dollars, so it was seventeen forty nine on the P card. They were saying that we went twelve dollars and forty cents over from the, um, supplies list, so that comes out.
So if it's, if it was seventeen forty, seventeen forty nine is left on the P card, you're adding thirty two sixty to that amount. And that's what the balance of the P card theoretically should be when the increase is done. Cause whatever the balance you have is on the P card in these mods.
Are you, so I, I'm no, I'm, I mean, does any other council members have questions?
So there are three thousand dollars in black, that's for our
That's gonna be for the report writer.
Okay, good.
Celia has her hand raised.
Screen, go ahead.
Yeah, the only question I really have is if we, cause I'm seeing on the right hand side the supplies at five, I'm sorry, cause it's tiny, five thirty five.
Oh, we voted on those already, right?
No, no, that I know, but remember they said it was, um, slightly different because it came up to
Twelve dollars and forty cents, yes.
Came up to five forty seven seventy two. So where did we adjust for that?
The seven, the seventeen thirty seven line right here. That just, I put the number there, but that's not where it goes. But seventeen thirty seven is what is currently, should currently be on the P card.
Okay.
If they make that adjustment for the twelve dollars or when they make that adjustment, otherwise it's seventeen forty nine, that's currently on the P card.
Okay, so it'll come down to seventeen thirty seven or something, right?
I'm assuming once they make that adjustment from the overage, yes.
Alright, alright, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you, Kristi. Thank you.
I'm kinda in the wind right here. I don't know the direction of the conversation right now. What the next?
I mean, using this table, you should be able, you should be able to frame your motion. So basically, your motion is gonna indicate a reduction of three hundred dollars from supplies, an increase of the P card of thirty two sixty, a reduction of local travel of three hundred, a reduction of parent involvement of two thousand, uh, a reduction of memory reimbursements to thirty six sixty and, uh, establishment of a new line item of three thousand dollars for the annual report writer.
I'm just gonna type this out real quickly. Thank you, Tillman.
Okay.
So Amy, I think to answer your question, um, the total amount on the P card would be just under five thousand dollars.
So she's off a thousand dollars too, so that's why I'm just like, Jesus, wherever we are now, I, um.
Yeah, from what, um, Mr. Tillman had thirty two hundred sixty plus the seventeen forty nine is five thousand nine dollars.
Right. So right around five, yeah.
Right around. Alright, let me see, I'm
So I guess, um, the, the next step, um, Kristi is just, just finalize.
That's what I was just saying right now.
And Kristi M, since you're, since you're gonna record this, um, you got any questions? Do, do you, what Mr. Tillman was saying?
I'm okay. I just need Kristi to please type it out for me. So this way I
Type it out and trying to make it clear.
Okay, thank you. It's just much easier if you type it and then I read it and nothing gets lost in translation.
Thank you, ladies.
I really appreciate, I really appreciate typing it.
Kristi, if you'd be good enough to forward us, Shona, Kamala, myself, a copy of this edited spreadsheet.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, the whole council in the moment too, so she's not able to write, she's
I'm sorry, Tillman, what is this, the thirty two sixty? How am I listing that in my motion? That doesn't Alright, I am, I am pretty much, I'm Can someone read the list out loud while I type? I'm just gonna be honest. My mind is fried and as I'm thinking and writing, it's a bit much for me. Literally, my child is sick and I'm struggling. Unless we just want me to have the meeting longer and I don't mean to, I'm struggling to type and think and write. So.
So do it this way, a, a reduction of, of the office supplies line item by three hundred dollars.
Currently I have, I moved to create a line item for the annual report for three thousand dollars.
Okay, that's good.
Right, moving three hundred from supplies to the P card, three hundred from
No, 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 don't even say, don't even say the P card. A reduction of three hundred dollars from office supplies.
Okay.
An increase to the P card of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. A reduction of the local travel line item of three hundred dollars.
That's my, that's what's throwing me off. We're, we're moving you're just making one clump as a I'm sorry, I'm gonna write exactly what you say and move on. I'm gonna create an item, reduction from three hundred from supplies, increase of P card by three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Reduction of local travel of three hundred dollars. A reduction of the parent involvement line item of two thousand dollars. A reduction of member reimbursements of three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Reduction from three hundred supplies increase, um. So I'm to create a line item for the annual report for three thousand dollars. Reduction from three, of three hundred dollars from supplies, increase of the P card by three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Reduction of local travel, three hundred dollars, reduction from parent involvement line item of two thousand dollars. Reduction of member reimbursement of three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Right. I mean, that's, that's in effect what, you know, what you're doing.
Should I repeat the motion again for the council?
Yes, please.
I moved to create a line item in the, for the annual report for three thousand dollars. Reduction for three hu, the hundred dollars from the supplies. Increase of P card by three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Reduction of local travel of three hundred dollars. Increase of P card by three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, reduction of local travel of three hundred dollars. Reduction from parent involvement line item, two thousand dollars, reduction of member reimbursement, three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Maybe the second?
I second it.
Um, anybody have anything? Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Anybody have? Constance, are you good?
Proceed, Mr. Spencer.
I'm, pardon the bus back. Are you good?
Yep, I'm good. I'm just going to read her motion before we vote on it, so that everybody knows what they're voting on. So just let me know when we're ready to vote.
Okay, going once, going twice. Anybody else? Last call. All right, Kristy M., do your thing.
Okay, we are voting on the motion to create a line item for the annual report for three thousand. Reduction of three hundred from supplies, increase of P card by three thousand two hundred and sixty. Reduction of local travel by three hundred, reduction from parent involvement line item of two thousand, and reduction of member reimbursement for thirty-six. Amy Minsky? Yes. Mr. Craig Spencer? Mr. Spencer?
Please, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shemel Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Christie Angel?
Yes.
Ms. Christie Montevan, yes. Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewett?
Yes.
And Ms. Constance, see you do.
Yes.
Okay, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I have. I have nine votes for yes, the motion has passed. I'm sorry, eight votes, yes, the motion has passed.
Thank you very much, council members. Um, thank you, Shauna, thank you, Kamal, thank you, Mr. Tillman, um. Um, I gotta, I gotta shoehorn this in, guys. Um, so we, I learned, we learned last, yesterday that there was supposed to have a town hall on May fourth. Um, I wanna set aside some time for us to talk about this. To respond back in terms of what the chancellor only had. Stayed when that hour is, or if we have that choice. Um, we have a, a meeting scheduled, our business meeting is scheduled at six-thirty. Um, so I don't wanna waste anymore of the council's time. I just wanna see if we can secure. Uh, an, an, a date. This calendar meeting. Then, at the latest. Can I get a motion to have a special meeting to talk about? On, um, on May. Sorry, guys, I'm getting off the bus. What a night. Thank you, everybody, for your dedication.
You were breaking up. Can you repeat what you just said the last sixty seconds?
Oh, good, cuz I kinda said things under my breath. Um, yeah, so, okay, I'm looking at the calendar. So we're looking to have a town hall on the fourth when we have our business meeting. Um, we have spring break on the week of the eighteenth of April. Um, I think we, it behooves us to meet the, um, next week. Uh, no later than the twelfth of April, for us to, um, talk about this in length, what we want to have happen. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to have a special meeting about this, um, within the next, uh, ten days. Um, cuz we're not gonna talk about it tonight. Um, so I know we have an OPT meeting on the seventh. I know we have some other, um, uh, some other committee meetings, but we wanna take advantage of this, this town hall, this, this hour that we get. So, hold on. Thanks, guys. Um, so can I get a motion? I'm, I'm looking at maybe April fifth or April sixth. Um, to give us time to, to hear back from FACE to see what the parameters are and we can, we can flesh this out. Cuz like I said, the sooner we finalize this, the better off we are. So can I get a motion to have a special meeting?
Can I have a question? When is the next check-in for the FACE? If we can use that time?
Well, that's, uh, it's, they, they didn't have the twelfth available. So all they have is the fourteenth available. Um, and that's after our joint business calendar meeting, and that's right before the break. And I don't wanna mess around. I mean, we wait to that long, then we may, uh, you know. Um, I do, I think we, we need to, we need to take the time and we give, we gotta make this decision within the next ten days. So that way, that, that, that week of the eleventh, they could work on it, and then coming back from spring, from spring break, they could, we could finalize, we don't have to worry about, you know, they'll, they can advertise through the, through the flyers and.
Ms. Green gotta hang up.
Go ahead, I gotta get on this bus. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm thinking that it's very difficult to pin, one, it's difficult to pin the chancellor down, not this chancellor, any chancellor, period. So if they give us a date, it's great. My, uh, my question, however, is, does it have to be a town hall? Because a town hall, it's a very specific format. They only ever give you one hour specifically. Uh, all the questions have to be in an advance. Um, and there is no room for real discussion, per se, about what the needs are in the, in the community. And there's no room for anyone from the community other than us to really ask a question. They have to mail, you know, they have to send it to us by, by email, and then we have to sort them and all that kinda stuff. Is it possible to request? Um, and or ask kindly if we can do it in a different discussion format, so it is not exactly an hour um, on the nose, and that, um, it has a little more meat to the discussion itself. Because this is a very, as everyone here knows, it's a very specialized district. And, um, I would hope that whoever is leading the DOE knows something about our specialized district. The last person did not know as much as I would have liked them to know. It's an opinion. Um, but I think it's worth having, um, people be able to, I'm not saying five hundred people get to ask questions cuz it's never gonna happen, but at least have some of the constituents from D seven, uh, the seventy-five be able to ask questions. And, um, and or us, as council members, get to find out how much, you know, is invested, or how much, you know, the chancellor's vested in seventy-five. How much do they know? How much do we need to help them learn our, our space or? And that doesn't happen in a town hall style thing. It just doesn't. So can it be a, some sort of a roundtable, a discussion, or something else, rather than a, um, specifically a town hall? Because like I said, a town hall has, at least the way that the parameters are set for a town hall, it does not lead to that kind of feedback.
Well, I mean, I haven't heard anything back from Tamika. That's why I'm including the whole town, count, the whole council. Tamika sent it to me and Mr. Lawrence and just the people in FACE, and I'm like, how do you have this happen? And not include Kettler and not include Fodey? In my email, I was like, Jose Luis Rios, Via Lua, um, knows about sending things like this up. Can you include him at least? I mean, and she hasn't, and so she, she said in her email that she wasn't available today, that Lynn Sanchez, um, maybe I'm saying that, I lost it. Um, is available, and I copied her. I'm like, well, first off, get my email right. Second off, this is the council, you know, like, give us, give us some parameters. So, um, I did the best I could. So, yeah, I mean, it's, an hour is always given us.
No, 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 understand something. I'm not condemning you. I'm saying, can we ask? Cuz we are a council, we are a citywide council, we are the only one that happens to be under the chancellor's reign, so to speak. Can we ask that it be a slightly different format? I'm not saying to necessarily reinvent the wheel, but we do need a little more in-depth information than perhaps some of the other, um, councils do. Because like I said, it's a specialized district, but it happens to be a specialized district, which is in all five boroughs, us, Suffolk County. Okay, so it is a lot of work. It's a lot of people, it's a lot of moving parts. We do need to have perhaps more, a little more than an hour, and perhaps a deeper discussion. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying not to take before, anything like that. I'm just saying, let's see if we can extend it, or if we can broaden the conversation. That's all.
All right, I'll put that request in our email. Well, I mean, I have it on, we have it on record that an hour is good, and I want us to take advantage of it. So for this hour, what, what do you want to do? If the motion doesn't pass, and you don't plan, then, you know, that is, that is, um, but I just wanted to make sure that you, you heard, you guys heard about it when I heard. And Mr. Lawrence heard about it. So um, yeah, I hear you, I recognize you, Syria, so, um, I'll put.
I'm not saying not to plan for the hour. I'm just saying, it, this should be more, there should be a, a deeper discussion. Because other than that, we keep going at the same thing all the time, and nobody ever understands what we're, hell, we're talking about half the time. And that's important that they do, cuz we will never get anything moving forward if they don't. It is important for the powers that be that make the decisions to understand what it is that we're asking for in particular. Uh, what the issues are within seventy-five, and the, the solutions that we would like to see going forward.
Okay, yeah, um, I, I, I will talk offline, and I'll, I'll frame that email and then send it out, I think tomorrow. I think I'll have time for my meetings tomorrow, uh, for work, but thank you, Syria, for that, uh, valuable insight. So, um, coun- council members, it's almost nine o'clock. Um, so I don't wanna can we, can we, is there a motion out there for us to plan for this, or? Um, or do, or, or, I wanna send out another email for Syria's, um, insight, and then we'll see how it goes. I mean, I don't know. Nobody else is saying.
I would suggest that we table it and have the conversation through email, since um, we can't really make a decision today, and there's, and there's a lot of committee meetings next week. And special meetings can be requested through email, so that's my suggestion.
Okay, so, I mean, um, is, anything else from the rest of you guys? I, I don't wanna assume silence is compliance, so. Going once. Mr. Lawrence, you have anything to add? Cuz I think we're gonna wrap up, since I can't get a motion.
No, 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 no. I, I think that everything is correct. I think what Amy says, the best way to move, uh, this, you know, uh, put it through email, and a special meeting could be requested through email.
Yeah, I have a question. Since, um, we have allocated the three thousand dollars for the writer this evening. Um, and I believe, um, Celia is the one who's in the committee for the annual report. Um, what is the next steps and what does that timeline look like?
I think you weren't here in the beginning when we said that we have, um, we are trying to get a writer from a pool of vendors who are already DOE writers, or DOE, you know, of the DOE, um, clearance, city clearance, cuz this is actually not a DOE vendor, it's a city vendor. And so, so we're gonna, uh, move forward with that. As soon as we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm gonna, uh, leave the rest of my time for Kristy, cuz she has her hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, best thing, Christian.
Oh, I was just gonna piggyback in case you wanted to also, um, speak that we have a possible tentative date and a toolkit that we are working on to help in the planning of what Ms. Green is doing in the, in addition of the annual report.
And that's, that's actually thanks to Kristy. So thank you, Ms. Angel. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, yeah, um, Constance, Patricia, Kristy M., anybody else wanna chime in? It looks like, uh, in reference to this May fourth thing, then, um, Sylvia, I'll work with you offline, and Mr. Lawrence and I, and will ask for more time. Obviously, I mean, yeah, I want more time, but you know. Sometimes we gotta work with what we got. Um, so, uh, yeah, so if there's no motion, um, I think that's about, thank you, council members for staying on. Um, thank you for your dedication, and your diligence, and your passion. And, um, I think that's about it for me, Mr. Lawrence.
All right. So with that being said, thank you, Shauna. Thank you, everybody. Uh, may I get a motion to adjourn this meeting if there's no further questions?
I move that we adjourn this meeting, um, this special meeting for CCD seventy-five. Um, I just moved that we adjourn.
In a second.
I second.
Any extinction. Seeing none, hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned at twenty-one hundred hours. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night, everybody. Thanks for everything.
Good night.